Okay, Steve, are you running it or?
Yeah, so I'll start.
So I just want to sort of start, is this going to be, you know, it's a big project, it's going to be a process. I'm not going to rush it, but I want to be sure we kind of make sure we understand. There's a whole bunch of subjects we need to probably go over. You can take it off from there.
So, good evening, everybody. Steve Rabel from McCullough Goldberg and Staff here on behalf of the Miriam Osborne Memorial Home Association on the right way at 101 Thiel Road. So, we're excited tonight to begin our site plan conversation with Planning Commission, to obviously understand this is going to be a thorough process that we're kicking off this evening. So, just to kind of reorient you to some of the background here, as I'm sure you all remember, not too long ago, the Osborne took a nearly four-year-long zoning amended process, thinking about the future of their campus. The last major update was completed in 2001. And prior to the recent zoning amendment, there hadn't been a truly formal regulatory framework in zoning ordinance for even defined use. So, that zoning was approved in 2022. The Osborne has been working diligently with its consultants and its residents to determine how they want to formulate a site plan within their stakeholders. And the end result is what's been submitted to you and what we're going to be reviewing this evening. And what you'll see is not just a zoning compliant plan that's consistent with what was adopted in 2022, but also a plan that we believe has taken into consideration a lot of the comments we heard through that process, both from the city, your consultants, as well as some of the neighbors. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Matt, just to speak to some of the specific needs that are being addressed, and then we'll have Andy walk you through the site plan.
Sure. Andy, if you can just go to the next slide. So, I just want to introduce the team real quick. So, here tonight, we have Caroline, Caroline Worlick-Levens. She's with Bayer Blinder &amp; Bell, the architect. We have Bob Goldie here from Towers Gold. He's our landscape architect for the project. And then we have both Andy Tong and Matt Steinberg here from DTS Provinment. And obviously, you've just met Steve. And then Stephanie Larson's also here from the Osborne. So, we really appreciate your time here this evening. We do not have Greenbrier Development. They're our financial consultant, the worst in the senior living, that's helping us look at numbers and other types of things on this project. Next slide, Andy. So, just a little history about the Osborne for some of you who may not know it. The Osborne's been around since 1908. We have done senior living since 1908. And not only have we done it, we're really known around the country as one of the preeminent senior living communities in the country. We've always done things to really high standards in the way we do things. And one of the things that we've always done is we've always evolved during times of change, where we've seen senior living go on. As Steve had just said, the last project that we completed, the last major project, finished up in 2001, that was our Pathway 2000 project. It began back in 1996 and went through many different phases with adding our skilled nursing facility on the one side, and then the entrance fee units that you see in the cottage rooms that you see now on the campus here today. Since that time, a lot of things have changed within senior living. We've seen a lot of changes within the market with competitors entering the market. We've also seen a lot of different demands from seniors of what they want. And we also want to anticipate the future needs, which is the baby boomers that are coming through and are going to need senior living. Now, what they do want is a different product than what we've always told them that they want, right? They're telling us now that they want to live in independent living as long as they can. And also with technology and with home care, we're seeing the ability for that to happen. So, back when we did Pathway 2000, natural progression was independent living. You fill your need there, you move to assisted living, it's sort of skilled. We're seeing a little less of that kind of going forward. The other thing that we're seeing is that they want more amenities. And these aren't the amenities of old. These are amenities that fall around health and wellness, lifelong learning. Right now, the space that we have really don't meet a lot of those demands. We're seeing a lot of the competitors come in and actually go ahead and build those. The other thing on our campus, as you can see from the older buildings, is a lot of things really kind of spread out in the way it got built back during Pathway 2000, within the connectivity of all the buildings. So, within this site plan that we'll present to you today, one of the things that our residents have said, one of the things that has also been shared with us by our consumers that are looking at products is that they not only want to see that amenity out into the campus, but they want to see that in proximity. And they also want to be able to see that not only in proximity, but have shorter walking distances. So, right now, in our current assisted living building, our main building, the historical building, this is all assisted living with just as mattering about 10 independent rental units. The walks for these residents are quite large, I'm sorry, folks. The walks for these units are quite large to get from point A to point B into the dining rooms. The unit sizes for those units are about 450 square feet. What we're seeing is people that want to move into assisted living in the future want to move into units that are larger, more towards the 650, 700 square feet, and they more look like independent living. So, you'll see a new assisted living building on this plan that is purposeful. Also, in building that, what we're trying to do is the main kitchen for all of the activities from the healthcare models is actually in this main building here in the lower level. Where we've had different things like COVID and norovirus and other things, Department of Health comes in and they start viewing all of these buildings as healthcare entities because of the fact of where that dining facility is. So, we've gone through different times where they want to physically go ahead and shut down those dining rooms at different times, but yet we've got all these other people to feed. So, one of the things that we really want to do is when we build that IL, we'll move it over towards a skilled nursing facility. You'll see later a big connection underground where everything's connected. Parking and everything put in the ground because we know the view shed of what people want to see, not only our own residents, but people from the community are looking up on campus. They want to be able to see that green space. But that kitchen would then service these two buildings, where the other kitchens would then serve the independent living setting. You'll see the health and wellness and everything is built down the center corridor of this campus, creating an independent living that is more central. You'll also see some buildings that are built, and when they're built, it creates new courtyards. It still keeps the big central lawn that we've always had. The one we do the East Ray cuts on with the community, we do the lawn cuts on. That's something for us that we really want to continue to go ahead and do. We took a lot of looks at, you know, view shed from off the campus. And again, we also looked at heights of buildings. And hopefully, you'll see as we go through this, that those heights of the buildings were tried to kept at a minimum in certain spots to kind of control the view shed into also the historical building. That was very important to us. It's also something very important to our residents. And not tearing down that old historical building, but going back and looking at it, modernizing it, not only modernizing it, putting it as the center point on our campus here. So, you're going to hear a lot today. We know this is a process. The last thing I'll leave you with is, again, we won before you here today, if we didn't think that these changes didn't be made, and we wouldn't have done this process over the last six to eight years if we didn't think we needed to be in a different position. Right now, this campus as it sits is currently at 52% independent living to 48% healthcare. 52% independent living to 48% healthcare. You would not build a CCRC, a Senior Living Community, at those percentages today. They're built more like 70%, 30%. We approached those numbers with the additions of these units, and that positions us not only to be a successful campus today, it positions us to be a successful campus in the future. And we're hoping to go through this process and have a good conversation about that. So, we appreciate your time.
What's the IL again?
Currently, right now, the IL is about 52% to these healthcare. Healthcare is both skilled, assisted living, and memory care, and that's about 48% of the total units.
Let's just come to an agreement and not use any initials and just spell everything out as short of people who don't understand it.
Okay.
All right. So, nobody in the next.
So, I want to start with the existing site plan drawing, illustrative plan. The red line conducts the boundary of the Osborne today. 55.8 acres. As Matt mentioned, the original Osborne building is this centerpiece between the two flanking wings. The centerpiece opened in 1908 and the two wings subsequently in 1930, plus or minus two years, those two wings, one after the other. And I talk about that, or that shows, as the other buildings on the campus show, an evolution of the buildings and the circulation on the site to match the program and its changes over time. Matt mentioned the Pathway 2000 project, which was actually originally initially approved in 1993, and it took eight years to come to fruition. But that included independent living units here, 2000, 3000, 4000, arranged in a similar type U-shaped configuration as the original three buildings. A skilled nursing building around on one end, which attached to then the to-be-renovated assisted living buildings in there, in the center buildings. And then finally, the garden homes, 20 duplex garden homes further out from the site. But the idea, the challenge then and the challenge now is how are those buildings integrated into an existing campus that has open space, functional uses and needs, as well as a population that changes in its health needs over time? And to maintain that sense of campus and that sense of landscape, I think that the Osborne has been known for as you move into, as Matt described, the next phase of senior living on this campus in Ride. And so, part of the reason why it's taken the time, or the team has taken the time to work out many different configurations of buildings is to work within the vocabulary both of landscape, the buildings, the original buildings that formed two U-shaped configurations with courtyards on the interior, and see how that would work with new buildings, both programmatically and design-wise. So, there's a series of new buildings proposed that are marked by the red numbers. I'll go through them one at a time. First, I'll talk a little bit about what doesn't change. Access to the Osborne, I'll just go back for a moment. Access to the Osborne is currently through the Thiel Road on the north end. A gatehouse, entry circle coming up to the Osborne building here. Two secondary entries and exits on Thiel Road further north, further south rather, and one here near Old Post and Boston Post. Those will remain the same. So, the accesses to the campus remain exactly as they are today. Utility connections to the campus remain as they are today. In fact, one will be removed. The sewer system, the Osborne site is at a localized high point within Ride. And as the buildings were created over time, there was opportunity to connect to three different sewer systems within Ride. Two of those systems come out to the south and to the southeast. Part of the garden homes, at the time when they were completed, connected to the San Drive system. Other garden homes connected to the Osborne Road system. The city completed at the time, or near the time of our zoning amendment, sanitary sewer study, which looked at each of the lines in terms of their capacity for the receiving plants, as well as the individual sewer lines. And they found that the San Drive line was the most challenged within the city for a number of reasons, but primarily due to influence and infiltration to the size or the age of the lines. And so, we looked, in conjunction with the city engineer, at the opportunity to move some of the sewage flow within the campus, which is very unusual, I'd actually never seen it before, to be able to remove some of the constraints or some of the demand flow from the constraint area. So, when I say that sewer lines remain the same, the connection out to the San Drive system will be capped, and that will be rerouted to the Osborne Road system, which has more capacity, both in terms of the receiving plants, and the lines are in better condition. So, utilities, access remains the same. All the work has been therefore planned to be on the interior of the campus. Some of it at the north end, north of the original Osborne building, and some in the center of the campus. During the zoning process, as Steve mentioned, we looked at a number of options and we prepared what was a concept diagram at the time to illustrate what could potentially be done under the changes that were made to the zoning at that time. The zoning, or the zoning that was put in place at that time, which was for senior living facilities within the R2 district. Within that zoning, there were a number of parameters set, setback, building height, building coverage, site coverage. And at the time, there was consideration to potentially replacing the cottages in the southern portion of the site with hybrid buildings, taller buildings that would have more units within a single enclosed space. At that time, there was concern for how that would change the character of the south end of the site. And we were encouraged, or the Osborne was encouraged, to consider putting more, more new buildings at the north end of the site closer to the St. Regis, the West Med Building and the office buildings to the west. And so, in this more detailed planning that took place prior to the site plan application, that work was done. And the result of that work is a shifting of the change in the proposed campus northward. The cottages will remain the same. That's another thing that remained the same. The 20 duplex cottages remain as they are today. What will change is that the entry circle, the large entry circle that currently exists behind the gatehouse will be shortened so that two new independent living unit wings, mark one, either side of the main front door can be constructed. The door itself, the front door itself, which is actually a back door, I'm recently told, when the Osborne first was built, it was approached from the south. And so, there was a reconfiguration at some point after 1908. But this is now the front door. If you've been to that front door today, you note that as you get dropped off right in front of the door, there are five steps up. For a senior living facility, that's not the greatest configuration. That there is accessibility is critical all around the campus. So, there will be a larger entry pavilion here, flanked with two four-story independent living unit buildings. Pavilion number three will be a new assisted living building. That will be right next to the nursing facility and tied in together operationally so that the architects were challenged with both making things look well in plan in three dimensions and also operationally within different workings of the Osborne. There will be as well, new residential parking built for each of the new residences, residential buildings below grade. So, below, and I'll show you a slide shortly, below the two number one buildings and connecting over to the number three building, there'll be a single-level parking deck with new parking for the residents in those buildings. Visitor parking will continue to be in surface lots around the perimeter of the site. And the circulation will be adjusted slightly, for instance, in this area, to pull the Loop Road out from where it is today to clear the building and provide access and service to each of the new buildings. So, one, two ones, a two and a three, form the new buildings at the north end of the campus. Within the center of the campus then, a series of buildings are proposed that complement the existing layout of the original buildings and the Pathway 2000 buildings, beginning with building seven. The 2000, 3000, and 4000 buildings were built in a U. The new number seven building, which is a similar function with some new amenities, will be located so as to square off that quadrangle, if you will. And in the same way, this smaller building, which is a one-story building with wellness facilities and other amenities, will serve to square off the main courtyard. So, what the architects have done is create a series of interlocking buildings and courtyards within which different experiences, different open spacing experiences and opportunities for gathering, or walking, or enjoying the gardens can be provided. The other buildings that create now this new courtyard on the south side of the Great Lawn include a series of five new cottages, slightly different configuration than the old cottages. These were duplexes, two attached side by side. These are individual cottages. And the idea being that some people, as the planning went on for this phase of the design, some people determined, or it was learned that, a lot of people do like to live initially as they come to the campus in a detached unit. So, while other people like to be in a more apartment style, and still a third type of unit that's proposed on the campus, it's what's called a hybrid building, where a number of units are placed in close proximity to one another so they can share a common space. That's building number 10. We have five individual new cottages, a hybrid building number 10, forming the four buildings that's centered around that or create the boundaries of that new quadrangle. That's kind of an overview of the buildings. I'm going to, before I hand this over to Bob Goldie to talk about landscape and Caroline Levens to talk about architecture, I'm just going to talk about my favorite topic, parking. So, as I mentioned, the existing parking, the existing surface parking is around the perimeter, it's lightly outlined. But what this diagram shows is the existing underground parking below the 2000, 3000, and 4000 building. Below the new building that comes across, there will be an underground level of parking that connects. That becomes a square parking below grade. The new hybrid building also has parking at the first level. And underneath the two ILU wings, independent living unit wings, coming off the Osborne building to the north, there's a single level of parking that extends over to and adjoins the assisted living building. So, it also has access to underground parking. And that also connects by underground passage to the parking under the skilled nursing building. So, there's been a thought put in on the surface level, on the above-ground level, and also to the low-ground level to make connections, to make the Osborne in the future work well on all those different grade levels.
And the five independent carriages, that's the gray area.
Yes, those are two car garages in each one.
So, the net impact of surface parking pre-post is going to be a 25% reduction in surface parking. Is that a proper, 68 fewer surface spaces? Surface spaces?
Surface spaces, there will be a few less surface spaces. Is that correct?
Less, I guess.
Yes. Thank you. So, I will go back. I'll go back here to talk a little bit about landscape.
So, let's, we talked about this in the segment. What's the total increase in residents that this will?
There's about, there's about 108 net new units. There'll be some assisted living.
I thought it was higher when we were on campus, but I saw 108.
108, but couples, so it's 108 net units.
108 units, but you think 160.
A little bit of a reduction in IL, a little bit of an increase in IL. So, total, I would say is probably around 150, when you consider couples.
Matt, do you always have a full census?
We've been pretty high right now. I mean, we're about 90, I think we're back up to 92% now. COVID really set us back a little ways. People weren't looking to move at that point in time. But the census has been really, really, really good, resident.
So, that's the resident population and then the employee population that will increase?
Yeah, about, we estimate about 60 people. And of those 60 people, we have, we probably see a lot of them actually take the train. And since the majority of the staff is actually going to be more towards the IL, it's going to be more towards that amenity space, dining, housekeeping. So, I would expect probably about half of that staff to probably come up on the train. We have a high number of staff that use the train, and then we shuttle them over from the train.
Do you have a staff-to-resident ratio generally that you kind of keep track of?
You know, it's different in all the different areas.
So, you don't do it overall, you do it per unit?
Right, yeah. So, skilled is obviously much higher, and as is IL. IL is much lower because it's weekly housekeeping services and then the dining. Typically, most of the people in independent living choose to just have the meal in the evening, and they have a portion of meals, they can choose to have lunch there, but mainly that's for the assisted living and the skilled. But we will have cafes and other types of things in this plan. I think one of the things that this does, again, if you could just go back a slide, Andy, is just the connectivity, just getting back to the, no, one more, Andy.
Yeah, the way.
By the way.
Yeah. Yeah, this building here, really, this new building, the dining right now, when I talk about proximity, our smallest dining room on our campus is right here. It only can serve about 80 meals a night, of which about 60 of them sit down and 20 of them are takeout. One of the things, the hard part for our residents to do now is to traverse all these buildings to get over to our larger dining venues. So, with creating this building, the large part of the bottom of this building not only becomes, it becomes a very large dining venue with outdoor dining. We take our old bistro, our old bistro dining room, we make that into an all-day sort of cafe, socialization space. So, you can kind of see how that works. Then you have a new pool, fitness area, everything else that's on the top level that outlooks to the green. It's connected on the lower level. The lower level is some of the things that we've heard from residents. They want a brand-new, longer pool. Our pool currently over in our auditorium is too small. So, we're repurposing, we're putting the pool here on the submerged level. It's open up to above, though, being able to see access to the green. And this is all connected underneath the ground. So, summertime, spring, fall, people can walk across. Bad weather, they can go down through the bottom and connect to that area to get to the pool, the spa, and other types of things. Our old pool, we're actually going to take, and we're going to create that into an actual new meeting space. It's, right now, a lot of our meetings are taking space in this smaller aerobics room, if any of you've ever spoken over there. It's because the residents really can't get all the way over to that larger auditorium. So, we've moved a lot to there. This allows us to take the old auditorium, which was three times the size of that aerobics room, and be able to actually now hold those programs into that space there. So, a lot of thought was to put into, how do we connect all of this amenity space here in the central core around all the independent living residents? And when we remodel and redo this building, once we've removed the assisted living people out, this whole fourth floor becomes amenity space as well.
I was going to ask you what you're doing with your building, because you said that those units are undersized.
They're undersized. We're going to connect those units together. And that's one of the reasons why we hired Bayer Blinder &amp; Bell. They're an incredible historic architecture firm. Not only historic architecture firm, they've worked with a lot of major campuses, Harvard, Princeton, Dartmouth. And the reason why we chose them is we knew our problems with a historical building. We knew we did not want to take that building down. Easy way out to go ahead and do it. We felt, no, this is our history, it's what we're all about, how can we act in it? So, BBD came along, and it was a big step for us because as far as senior living goes, you know, they're teaching us some things, we're teaching them some things. But I think the design and the campus connections that they've been able to take from working with those universities and making newer buildings fit in with older buildings, and then talking about how we can modernize this, it was really important to us. Thank you.
I just have one, because we're talking about staff, and you can draw in. How many actual staff live on the campus?
Live on the campus?
Yeah, like, you don't have to house staff on the campus.
So, the only people that live right on the campus right now is myself and Bill Daublin, the Director of Facilities. Yep. And that, in this picture, that's what remains here. We do have a lodge, just in all transparency here, there is a lodge down in Garber Home. That was land that we sold. So, those buildings across the street, those big corporate buildings, we used to own all of that land. Back in the 60s, you know, we weren't doing well. They didn't choose to expand or do anything, they sold land. That's how that became the corporate plaza it basically is. So, you'll see a small brick building down in that Garber Road.
Down where we had ours.
Yep, that little brick building. That, we have leased back for a dollar, for 100 years. That lease comes up, we'll get it for another year for a dollar. And we do have some dining staff that live in there. The units are very small for them. And some other essential staff that actually come up on the campus.
I just want to say, this is the same as the illustrative plan. It doesn't have the same numbers. This is used for site cross-sections, which Caroline will go and will describe in a moment. But it seemed to somehow.
You can leave it, Andy. It's okay. It's okay. Did you lose the drawings?
No, we just rotated.
Yeah, that I don't know how you did.
So Matt was talking about the architectural heritage. The Osborne has obviously been the steward of not only architectural heritage, but its beautiful setting for over 100 years. And they have treated it with tremendous respect. And that respect in particular goes to care of its existing trees. There are over, or just under, I'm sorry, 1,000 trees on the site, 966 to be exact. These trees have been catalogued, assessed by a licensed arborist, and put in an extensive catalog, which by the way is included in the site plan submittal in preparation of what we see here.
What did you hear was that done?
That was initially done in 2019. It was reviewed and updated last October.
So the DVHs are updated to?
As of October, yes. So we have, we know exactly what we have on site. That was also used in getting accredited as Level 1 Arboretum status. So that's sort of a testament to the care and respect that had for their existing tree canopy. Of those 966 existing trees, what you're seeing here in terms of construction will require either the removal or the transplanting of 177 trees. Now of those trees that are impacted, approximately 55, or about a third of them, we feel are worthy of being considered for transplanting. And so right now, an arborist will be engaged to assess each individual tree to see what's possible to be transplanted. We're seeing, we're assuming that anything above a four to five inch caliber tree is going to be difficult for transplanting.
All right, I'm just gonna interrupt you for a second, because I know we remember the press here. To clarify, there was a misconception here that RIDE doesn't regulate trees lower than eight inches PVH. So your numbers actually, that excludes about 80 of those trees.
No, no. The 177 is all every tree that needs to be removed.
Yeah, no, that's what I mean, but.
But they're not all regulated by us?
Correct, so really.
91 of those, 94 of those trees are regulated.
Right, the number's quite a bit different.
Correct. Regulated in that, they are eight inches or greater. So you have maybe some, approximately 80 trees that are, all the trees are shown. There's three inch caliber trees, four inch caliber trees. Yeah, so all of it's shown, whether it's being removed.
Okay, but it's good, we didn't know about the transplanting program, it's great.
So you sort of stole my thunder there. Essentially 94 are regulated. And using the ordinance, the tree replacement ordinance formula or calculations, it would require 91 trees of a minimum size to be replaced. The planting plan that you have in the package proposes a total of 230 trees, minimum of three to three and a half inch caliber, larger than the minimum size required, to be planted. So that's roughly two and a half times the regulated requirement. That does not take into account any transplants that may occur. So any transplant of the existing trees that are able to be transplanted will be over and above that. So in essence, we're planting a significant number of trees. And I should also point out that the trees that need to come down because of locations of buildings are on the interior of the campus. The vast majority, very few of them are on the perimeter that's viewable from the outside of the campus. So in short, those trees that are being planted, and again, you have a plant list in the site plans submittal. We've created quite a variety of plants, mostly native plants. Some of them are not because we've gone through and looked at the trees that have to be removed, again, knowing it's an arboretum. And we wanted to ensure that if we're taking out a unique plant that's an arboretum quality tree, we want a replacement of that species. So we have taken that into consideration in formulating the plant list. In essence, when those trees are planted and construction is finished, there will be more trees on the campus than there are today. Again, not including any potential transplants of existing trees, will be over and above that. In addition to the tree canopy, of course, there's a whole nother level of shrubs that would be adjacent to the existing buildings. And those shrub planters are shown on the plan as well. So in essence, what we're trying to do here is to provide the next generation of plants to go with the next generation of housing for future residents.
So I'm gonna go over the architecture. First, I'm gonna show some site sections throughout the campus, just to give you a better understanding of the building massing and some moves that we're making in terms of the building heights and how they relate to the existing campus. After that, I'm gonna show some illustrative renderings to give you an idea of the exterior design. Before I get into that, I wanted to talk a little bit about the building massing and some of the thoughts that we're having from the design perspective. So not only in our thinking with the master plan, which you see, of being thoughtful of the orthogonal nature of the campus, as Andy alluded to, of creating these courtyards and trying to be thoughtful of the original planning of the campus, we're also starting to think about that in the exterior design, being thoughtful of especially the historic Osborne building, not only its architectural details, thinking about the architectural materials that are utilized and how we can bring that into the new designs.
I'm just gonna interrupt you a second. There is a board of architectural review and they will get into the detail of the design review. Let's just stick to massing. And I want you to focus on building 10 in particular, because that's the one that's probably the most.
Okay, certainly, I'll jump through the spiel. So these four site sections that you see here, we're trying to cover every condition that we can for each building. We have two running north-south, two running east-west. So we're gonna start with site section number one. What this is gonna capture is an understanding of cutting through these two independent living buildings at the front. It's gonna cut through a longitudinal section of the assisted living building. What it's also gonna show you is a better understanding of how the underground parking works there. So I'm gonna jump to that section and I'll jump back to the explaining others. I think it's floating.
Andy, you broke it.
Yeah.
Okay, so site section up here at the top, this is giving you an understanding of those four-story buildings. We did a lot of study on the height of these buildings in terms of the total height. What we wanted to be thoughtful of is respect the height of the existing Osborne building. As you drive up to these wings, we want you to be able to see the roof of the Osborne building, but also really capture the center of that building here, as you can see in this elevation. These two wings are planned to have a hip roof. Again, the top of that hip roof will not cover and go beyond the roof line of the existing Osborne roof. Over here, you have the new assisted living building that will be roughly four stories with a gabled roof. That will have underground parking that will connect the assisted living building and the garage parking of independent living. In terms of the topography, the entrance to that new garage parking is at a low side of the site. That is intentional to try to reduce the amount of regrading in that area of the site. There will also be access to that parking garage from this side of the site over here, near the existing skilled nursing pavilion. That will provide access for ambulances, service and loading. So that this side will provide access for residents who live in those new assisted, independent living wings. The other side will be service or the assisted living building.
Just as a note, as many of you may know, the ambulance right now actually has to go outside. It can't get into our current garage, so this is, will be a big upgrade there.
So moving down the page, this is cutting in the other direction in a north-south direction. So this is cutting as you're coming through the front door of the Osborne building. This is a new entry pavilion there at the center and showing again that parking garage with the independent living wing there in elevation. What this is also showing is that new wellness pavilion at the center of the site. It will have below-grade pool program there, and then that's also showing the height of that new pavilion. It's sloping in this direction towards the Osborne wing in order to create views towards that beautiful historic building. We're also being very thoughtful about the height of that and keeping it as low as possible so that especially from Old Post Road, we're maintaining those views up to the historic Osborne building. Lastly, in this section, you see the cottages there. Those will be two stories in height with a gabled roof, so that section is showing that height all the way up to the top of the roof. This section down here, again, moving back to the north-south section, this is covering the new independent living building. Let me just jump back here very quickly to get our bearings. So this section is gonna be cutting through this new independent living building, which we're referring to as Building 6,000. It's gonna show you a better understanding of that parking garage below and its height. It's also gonna be cutting through one of the independent living buildings there. And the last section, we'll rotate it, it's gonna cover the new hybrid buildings as well as Building 6,000 again. So this is showing you that four-story independent living building in the front of the site with the below-grade parking. This is that new independent living building 6,000. This parking garage underneath it will actually connect to an existing parking garage that is a U shape for the 2,000, 3,000, 4,000, 1,000 buildings. What's nice about that, currently they have done in parking, this is gonna create a continuous loop, so it's gonna be an improvement of that garage, but also provide more parking for the residents above for the independent living building. That building will be five stories in height. That is the highest building on the site, but it is the most interior-placed building on the campus.
So you just pointed it on the plane?
Yes, that's building seven on this plane.
Correct. And just to confirm that, it will be the highest of the new buildings.
Correct.
It will not be the highest building on the campus.
Correct.
Thank you.
And lastly, this section here is cutting from Old Post Road through the new hybrid independent living building, and also lastly, cutting through Building 7, which is Building 6,000 again, that independent living building. Wanted to explain the hybrid buildings a little bit better. So they are set in an area of topography that is sloping up towards the center of the site. So from Old Post Road, it will be four stories in height. However, that fourth story will be significantly set back architecturally, which you'll see in a rendering here in just a moment. We're thinking of that having a different materiality so that it appears to be a two-story and three-story volume. On this courtyard side, at that point, the below-grade parking will be buried, so you will only see three stories on the courtyard side. The access to the parking is from this Old Post Road side.
And where you're touching, that's Building 3?
This is Building 10, yeah.
Okay.
So it's basically. Yeah, it's cutting right here. So the access to the garage parking is from this side, so it's four stories on this side, three on this side.
It's too bad it's not the other way around.
Any questions on the sections before I quickly go over the renderings? I'm not gonna get too in the weeds on design, I just wanted to show a little bit of.
Well, do the sections, maybe someone's gonna talk about drainage at some point? Do any of the sections show the drainage basin?
I will talk about drainage. I, sorry, I meant to do that earlier. There are three existing basins on the site. One, two, three. Two of the building. In essence, all three will remain as they are today as visible from the outside. Both the southwest basin and the northeast basin will be deepened, while the rim will remain at the same elevation, deepened to increase its capacity by, in this case, 20%. In this case, 40%. This basin remains as it is today. There'll be a fourth basin added in this location along the old road. It will not be visible from the road, it will be depressed so that you see only the top edge grass from the old road. All of the, all of the stormwater has been re-looked at in toto now as part of this plan. And for all design storms, the system has been designed to reduce the peak flow runoff for 1, 2, 5, 25, 50 and 100 year storms.
So these are detention?
That's right.
No retention?
Correct.
Everyone understand?
Actually, explain that to people that are listening, the difference between retention and retention?
Well, they're not retaining water forever, they're slowing the flow and storm flow down.
So this is the end of our presentation. This is giving you a little bit of a glimpse into some of the renderings from the exterior. This is a view as you're coming up the main drive. That new entry pavilion will be here, it's still really flanking that historic view there. You see those two four-story new living, building wings and the assisted living off to the side. This rendering is giving you an understanding of that low wellness volume. This is if you were standing on one of those new cottages looking north towards the historic Osborne facade, so you can really see how low that is maintaining that U shed. That's that new building 6,000 there off to the side, which will have the restaurant and amenity space down at the ground level. This is an image of the new five cottages looking towards that new building 6,000. The idea of the cottages is to be timeless, masonry and to have potential wraparound porches and other exterior details there. This is another view, a little bit more zoomed in of those new independent living buildings, masonry, hip roof, lots of exterior balconies there. We're also pulling from the stone base of the Osborne building and the materiality of that building as well. This bottom left image is looking at the hybrids from the interior courtyard. You can see that change in materiality of the fourth floor. We also have a double height reading for the facade and the second and third floors to really make that feel like a low volume. And lastly, this is a front elevation view of that new assisted living building, also planned to be masonry.
So what are you doing for Building 10 to make it look like a low volume from the post road?
Yeah, so we're creating some terraces on that top floor. What that's doing is setting back the facade. So when you're at a lower topography and looking up, it's really gonna appear more like a three-story volume as opposed to a four. And also that change in materiality on the fourth floor is in an effort to make it appear more like a three-story volume.
The ugly part of that building is probably gonna be the garage entrances, so you'll need to think about that landscape thing. All right, so we touched a little bit on drainage, sewage, you, we're saying, sewage, you're saying, you think it's capacity, but it's hopefully reviewed by the engineer and the animal.
Yeah, I think what's gonna happen now is they've submitted an environmental assessment form, and they're gonna supplement it with the various environmentally packed areas. It's going to be similar to, this isn't the first time this has been done, it went through that extensive rezoning process. There was, a lot of these stones and so forth were included in there, but we'll see. I mean, in some ways, the site's remarkable and then it's not remarkable. There's no wells, there's no flood zones, there's no uni landforms, there's no the EAFs, any archeological, no, you know, endangered species, no plant or environment. So when you run the form, it returns a lot of what's not in impact. But looking at the stormwater design, that'll have to be done by a consultant, have to look at the stormwater or the sewage design, where it's going, whether any downstream improvements are necessary. We'll look at all the construction phasing, the, you know, where the staging is gonna occur. The other utility designing concerns, you know, gas and water and, you know, wherever those providers may require. But in essence, you're going to see that expansion also. It also, it has the sections, it's visual simulations from various points of view in this packet here. So you'll just see that environmental assessment forms all the way through and supplementing studies and, and narrative, how it's addressing those concerns. But again, this is picking up kind of where you left off with the rezoning process. Here we have a more specific plan, so we can come dial in the numbers. But that's really the, the next phase and I know they're already working on that.
Emergency services, how many calls do you get in a year, month of your company?
We'll, we'll be back and we'll get your specific number, I'd be guessing right now.
But you're saying that the pickup will be easier or better?
Oh, the pickup will definitely be easier on this one, these main front buildings because the access will be below grade in the garage for both now the skilled nursing facility, assisted living and those new units in the main building and up front. The two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, this new other building, unfortunately, when they built that garage, they didn't build it high enough for an access for an actual ambulance, which was unfortunate.
But the ambulances would still be coming in off the old road at your main entrance?
Yes, they will, they'll always come off the old road. So the access point into the main part of the access, ambulance always come in at that security gate because that's where they're telling them where to go and they're going with car service to direct them to those locations. So that will not change.
Any major changes in site lighting?
The plan is to essentially reuse the existing roadway lighting where we are adjusting the roadway. In essence, it'll be an identical lighting situation.
You touched on traffic.
Rubbish.
Garbage removal, any change to that?
No.
Still all underground basically?
Still.
And all private, private garbage?
So community services is also, we'll go through those. Obviously, it doesn't generate school insurance. Part of the offset of increases in, obviously, it does get a large number of emergency service calls, it's one of the highest in the city. So, but, you know, there, as there was done in the rezoning process, there's a fiscal impact as well. Taxes to help offset potential increases in expenditures.
Your train pickup for employees, is that from Harrison Station?
We run it out of Harrison since it's closer, yeah.
Okay, how do we want to schedule this? I mean, where are you going to be in two weeks probably?
They, they probably, yeah, won't have all this done, but it'll be on the, if, if it's not on the next meeting, it'll be on the July meeting too. Keep your eye on the planning commission agenda and get it circulated and we've got some homework to do, I'll be back.
Okay, thank you, it's very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wilma.
You know, you're saying Doug McLean's chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you find that drawing, let me know.